Good morning. I'm calling to order our regularly scheduled meeting of the Committee of the Whole. My name is Elizabeth Glidden. I'm the Chair of this committee. And I'm joined today by Councilmembers Gordon, Bender, Councilmember Andrew Johnson, Yang, Quincy Goodman, and Paul Masana. We're a quorum of the committee. Today, we have just a couple consent items, and then we will go into a discussion item. The two consent items are, first, just a referral to staff of the ordinance on municipal ID introduced by Councilmember Kano. And so that is just a referral to staff of that subject matter. And item number two is authorizing the city to join local government amicus brief in support of DACA programs in the case of regents of the University of California et al versus the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and state of New York versus Donald Trump in authorizing the city attorney's office to take all steps necessary to join in support of the amicus. So I'll move both those items. Any discussion on those, or anyone want to take that off seeing none on approval? Please say aye. Aye opposed? Those items are approved. We have one discussion item. This is really a follow-up from staff to request during our discussion of the municipal minimum wage ordinance for more information to further, anyway, in response to some particular questions about nonhospital residential health care and youth training policies. So Ms. Rivera Vandermeide?
Good morning. My name is Naria Rivera Vandermeide. I'm the Deputy City Coordinator for the City of Minneapolis. Thank you so much for allowing us to do a report back on some of the conversations we had. By way of ground, not that anyone needs to be reminded, but at the end of June, City Council approved a municipal minimum wage policy, but also asked staff and the minimum wage team to meet with stakeholders in nonhospital residential care enterprises that qualify as large businesses to see how they can accommodate a minimum wage, if they can accommodate a minimum wage, and what their concerns about that moving forward was. We certainly heard in our listening sessions, they were one of the groups that said, "We've got some concerns because our rates are tied to some federal reimbursement rates," or some state frankly. So we learned, and there's a little joke around our team, not that I ever quote our president often, but who knew that health care was so complex? Well, frankly, all of us did. And so as we learned and talked to people about this particular issue, the realities of reimbursement is varied and complex depending on the type of service provided. And it was really, and I actually just want to give a quick thank you to all the people that we spoke to because they were thoughtful, they were really focused on trying to provide us with information and data about their services. And I'll also say that while most of them were, actually, I should, I can say that all of them were really supportive of our municipal minimum wage policy, their concern was mostly how it affected them in a place where they did not always have control over their rates and their reimbursement rates because there are lags. So amongst those most critical nuances, as I mentioned, are that rates often lag behind service delivery, that by the time they submit those to get reimbursed, the time that they get paid for it can lag between 18 or as much as 27 months, and that's particularly for nursing care facilities. For PCAs, and while we, mostly our staff direction was about residential services, we had the opportunity to talk with a lot of folks who provide personal care, service workers, and work in people's homes as well. They have a different rate structure. They are banded, which means that they get to the same rate at some point, but they're able to stagger that over a period of five years, and recent legislature has actually opened that to seven years. So it takes a while for them to kind of catch up. We also had an opportunity to speak to some of our labor partners, and some of the recent contracts has also had some impact for the industry. And by way of example, we spoke with SEIU, and their most recent contract with PCAs in particular raised the floor from a current $11 an hour to $12 an hour. They had wanted 13, but they got to 12. And what happens in those contracts is that that impacts all folks in those categories, not just folks that happen to be in that particular union. So those changes are happening as we move forward. I'll try to distill as best I can in English what we heard from so many dedicated providers about some of the ways in which their rates and billing moves forward, and hoping you'll bear with me as I try not to delve too deeply into the technicalities of it because it really is quite nuanced. But in 2015, the Minnesota Legislature authorized a new system for nursing facility reimbursements. They call it value-based reimbursement, or VBR. And as of 2016, under this, it's really based on actual cost of care, although there are limits to that on how they break those costs down. There's also different complexities. So the more complex a nursing home facility services are, they also get different rates as that moves forward. If I speak about it in other terms, in terms of the complexity in their rates, they actually have five rate components, one of which includes direct care that really speaks to wages and benefits for most of their nursing home assistants and health care staff, certified nurse assistants, nurses, aides, and health care staff. They have another, and that is actual cost-based. They have another that also speaks to other operating cost and/or other care, and that speaks to health workers and religious personnel. And so facilities with a higher operating cost will see different rates as that moves forward because it's tied to the type of service that you offer and the types of, sorry, where you are in the, so not only to size, but the type of staff that you have. So whatever rate you get with VBR, and we'll talk about this a little bit later on, that there have been some studies, and just recently, a study in March of last, or this year, where they spoke about how those rate increases have been distributed and what those trends are. A few other considerations regarding reimbursement, that there's a quality component in addition to complexity that may impact the rate a particular facility gets. There's a quality component, and that goes in two prongs. There's one that is just a general quality component that is requested of all nursing home facilities, that everyone must achieve some measurable program outcomes in order to receive full funding. But there's an additional quality component that is meant to be an incentive that for those that provide a different kind or a higher quality of care, or provide more amenities and services and so forth, and that is measured in quality surveys or in the indicators that they may put forward, they can apply for up to 5% difference of their operating payment rate. Another complexity in nursing home facilities is that Minnesota has what it's called the Minnesota's Rate Equalization Law, that it requires all nursing home facilities to provide equal services or equal rates to their, I should say rates, not services, to its residents regardless of payer source, which means that they cannot charge someone who pays privately more than someone who is not being, who is getting their services reimbursed by Medicaid. So what it all means really is to honor the fact that what we heard, and that it is harder for facilities like nursing homes to make large adjustments in their operations because there is a delay in the reimbursement, and that they can't necessarily change their fee structure to charge some people more to make up the difference. We have seen some reports that indicate that there are some positive trends in wages and staffing, due in part, and we've seen this with some of our data as we presented in June on the minimum wage, on the minimum wage policy in general, that there are, that this field is so competitive that rates have already beyond and surpassed the current federal minimum wage. There is that 27th Nursing Facility Payment Reform Report, and I'm happy to make that available to anyone who wants to delve into that a little bit more. But they indicate that in terms of their wages, that the per-hour increases have ranged between 3% to 12% from 2015 to 2016 in that transition to VBR, with facilities more likely to use those benefits to pay for wages versus some benefits. And so where they're able to maneuver perhaps, and if there are increases, whether it's in their operating cost, or there have been increases in state or federal minimum wages, then they'll have to make some choices on where those benefits will go, or whether those monies will go to, whether it will be to increase wages, or whether that will be something about offering benefits. And what we heard from some of our stakeholders is that they chose to, for example, provide less benefits as they move forward because they needed to be competitive in their wage increases. With staffing, we've also noted a continuing trend of staffing level increasing due to an increase in VBR. But with that positivity, I'll also say that there are flaws in the new VBR system as well. This lag or this gap in delay in payment is something that all facilities continue to struggle with as that moves forward.
Can you hang on just a moment? So if folks have a conversation, that is totally fine, but just could you take it maybe outside? We can just hear you all the way down here. I apologize. I apologize to my colleagues, too. I know. Sometimes this is the only moment you have to grab a conversation, so.
And there are also, not only other flaws in the delay in payment, but also I'll be very clear to showcase what our advocates and our providers said, that there's no inflationary adjustment in the rate setting, and that is something that they are struggling with the legislature and having to push forward to make sure that whatever rate reimbursement increases happen, that that includes an inflationary adjustment. The other thing that was very clear from our providers was a note that even before this move to VBR, they had already been under a four-year freeze, and so were not able to raise their rates for any amount of time, and so often feel like they're still catching up to what the market is asking them to do. I'll highlight one of the advocates that we spoke with in particular that gave us a lot of good data about it, Leading Age Minnesota, that represents about 60 to seven members in Minneapolis, including 10 nursing homes. They, again, I want to make clear, are supportive of our efforts to increase minimum wage. Their request was either to modify the phase-in depending not just on size of employer, but weather, and they took this from a Seattle model, and it was the only, and the trends that we saw from our state, if you think back to the summer when we presented what we had heard from the 51 jurisdictions as we did that state scan, it was the only city that had done this, is whether or not employers provided medical benefits. Could that do a phase-in approach? Seattle did six years if not providing benefits, or eight years implementation timetable if providing benefits. And we had at that point not recommended those approaches as we did implementation, but wanted to share that that was their ask. Their other ask was to treat all nursing home providers as small for purposes of implementation. Their data revealed, and they shared some data with us as we look forward, is that for most of their positions, they were certainly below 15. And it also was kind of consistent, as I look at the data that they have here, they only have two categories where their number of employees are larger than 100, which is how we've in our ordinance classified large businesses, and those are nursing assistants. And for those, their lowest wages were 1273 and 1325. So already in that large category, there are folks who have surpassed what the current minimum wage is. It also is consistent, if you'll remember this graph from our last presentation, with some of the information we had from DED that really looked at nonhospital health care facilities, where we really looked at some of the data across the, again, this is regional employers, not just Minneapolis, but it gave us a breadth of what folks are doing. And we again focused on the large employees, which is the last graph where we see that of the nine employers, most of them averaged about $16.24 an hour already. So we're a bit ahead of the game in terms of trying to be competitive, and I think that's out of necessity. It is a competitive field, and trying to remain, finding folks who could do that. That is consistent with the recent Bureau of Labor Statistics information that only show out of the 650, and this is more technical than you need to know on a Wednesday morning, but of the 659 occupational categories that reported for Minneapolis-St. Paul that showed a median wage, only 25 occupations showed median wages below $11 an hour. None of them were in the human services, health and social services occupations. If we go to the next range of those, between $11 and $15 an hour, there were five occupations, most of them health care and PCAs, the other one was childcare, that are already falling in that $11 to $15 range. Again, while the staff direction asked us to speak with residential health providers, we were approached and really welcomed the opportunity to speak with those who are, who provide home and community-based cares, mostly in the PCA category. And we had good advocates in ARR, an organization that represents folks in this regard. We noted for them that these are the wages that are almost entirely set by the state, and they have this banded range categories where they float and are, they reach a certain category of payment over a five-year period. They do not have a lag in their payment. They are based for service as that moves forward, and their average rate right now is about $11.97, though they have estimated that they will probably reach $13 an hour by next, by the end of next year. There were also some concerns, and I wanted to again bring those up as we heard from stakeholders, aside from the reimbursement rates, what an impact the municipal wage policy may have just on their model, on how they do business. They have a lot of PCAs who travel to Minneapolis. They may be based elsewhere, but use Minneapolis as a place to either take in a Twins game or to go to a museum. Those would most likely fall in the more than two hours per week category, and so would then be subject to be paid minimum wage for the services and the times that they would do here, just like any other business based outside of Minneapolis, who would have either delivery services or workers working in the city for more than two hours. So they would be subject to that. They wanted us to let us know what that is. Their request was, if not an outright exemption for the type of services that they offer, a phased-in approach that more matched their banded rate versus whether or not it was small or large. So they were requesting kind of a more nuanced approach. So as we looked at some of those, as we took into account some of the conversations we had with our advocates and with some of our providers, we had several staff considerations. We looked at the current rates in comparison to how the municipal, the Minneapolis municipal policy will be moving forward in the next year or so. We looked at the impact of providing unique accommodations based on industry, and while I don't discount the challenges that are often faced by nonresidential home health or health providers and our home health provider community, we also heard there were unique circumstances with other industries. Certainly, we heard that, and I know that none of us forgets that we certainly heard that from the restaurant industry in the conversation about a tip credit or not. But we also heard it from small businesses, or from startups, or for entrepreneurs who said, "I face unique challenges in this industry." So we certainly took that into account. We also thought that, that given how the competitive nature of the home health care industry and their wages right now, given the data that we see, are already above the federal mark, and in fact, in many circumstances, they won't impact, even the large ones won't be impacted by a change in our policy until 2018 maybe, but mostly 2019, that we've got a little bit of time here, particularly as we just put the RFP out, to take a look industry by industry, and this is one of those industries that we've asked in the RFP to make sure that we take out, similar to the restaurant industry that we're paying attention to, to make sure that we are not impacting it in a negative way. So with all those considerations, we ultimately did not recommend a change in the policy. We wanted to honor the fact that having it administratively simple for all involved and having a more uniform policy would be preferable. We also did want to make sure that we continue to look at this year by year to make sure that we didn't have those impacts. If something were to change in reimbursement policies, whether at the federal or state level, and we certainly know that there have been a lot of conversations in this current federal administration about what support for health care looks like, as well as perhaps support to other areas that we work in, we want to make sure that we catch that early on. And we wanted to honor the fact that we wanted to support improvements for rate reimbursement rates in our legislative policy agenda, and certainly support council moving, it's in that direction if they were supportive, to make sure that we spoke with our partners in IGR, to make sure that we lend a voice to ensuring that those rates continue to grow and to increase. We are cognizant that our nonhospital residential care providers often provide services to some of our most vulnerable and most needing of services. We want to make sure those folks are paid appropriately for the work that they do. So with that, I will stand for questions.
Thank you very much. Questions from councilmembers? This was a thorough report, so thank you very much. A lot of engagement with stakeholders. Council President Johnson.
So Madam Chair, I think this recommendation about including support for caregiver rate, improvements to reimbursement rates, is that something that out of this committee we could refer to IGR for potential inclusion on our legislative agenda?
Absolutely.
Okay. Go ahead and make that motion.
Okay. So Council President Johnson has made a motion to follow up on the recommendation from staff that we update our legislative policy agenda relating to inflation rate inclusion discussion, and I think we'll just refer that back to IGR staff so that they could then bring some language and review that. So any discussion of that? Seeing none on approval, please say aye. Aye opposed? Any other discussion on this? I'm not seeing any, so I will go ahead and move that we receive and file this report. On approval, please say aye. Aye opposed? And that item is received.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Council President.
Okay. So I apologize for being late. Did we deal with the youth employment early?
So we still have a presentation to come on youth employment?
Great, thank you.
Okay. All right.
So Madam Chair, I will cede the floor to our partners in CPED, who took the lead on the staff direction that referred it back to staff to discuss what criteria to look at in terms of a youth training rate.
All right. Let's move it forward. Thank you.
Committee Chair Glidden, councilmembers, thank you for having me here today. I'm Anna Peterson. I'm the Director of STEPUP in CPED in Employment and Training.
Did we have this presentation attached online or anywhere? It's avail, so if people want to take a look and have it, then they can look in the agenda, and it's right there. Thank you.
We should have this as well.
All right. Thank you. Thanks. Just wanted to center us on finding the information. Thanks.
Thank you. As you know, STEPUP is the City of Minneapolis's nationally recognized youth employment program. And I want to thank you for your unwavering support for STEPUP. I've been leading the effort in CPED to build the training criteria for approved training programs as written into the minimum wage ordinance. I received, I reached out to many of, excuse me. My focus has been in the underlying section of the ordinance, and in entering into this project, I bring my expertise from STEPUP, but I also recognize and honor the many quality youth employment programs that serve Minneapolis youth, or that serve, that have youth that work in the City of Minneapolis. So to that end, I reached out to numerous youth employment partners and listened and got their feedback on what they believe constitutes a quality youth employment and training program. I received written feedback. I met with partners, and I had phone conversations. I also shared my outreach list so that I could get recommendations to who to include in that feedback. So it was a broad list of partners. After hearing from many programs, I presented the criteria to the Workforce Development Board and received their approval, and today I'll present that for you. First and foremost, a quality training program must focus on youth development in the workforce. This requires mentoring and career development as part of the work experience. Organizations who wish to apply to be eligible can apply at any time, and we will update that list on the city website as programs are approved. We have two ways to qualify as a city-approved training or apprenticeship program. The first is if the training program receives federal, state, or local funding specific to youth workforce development. We honor the vetting process for these funds, and we do not require these organizations to go through yet another vetting process for us to approve them. If an organization does not receive this type of funding, we have built a criteria to ensure quality of programming. A program must have all of the following components. The first is training. We expect that youth will receive some sort of work readiness training. Within this required training, we include some required curriculum components and some optional components. This creates a standard of quality and still allows for some flexibility with youth employment programs so that the quality remains high when we're not excluding a quality program for lacking just one item on their curriculum. Nor did we want them to force items into something that strategically doesn't fit into their programming. The full list of requirements and suggested components has been provided for you. The next item is supervisor training. My experiences shows me that a great supervisor makes or breaks an internship experience, and my colleagues and partners agreed. Therefore, we require a supervisor training that has four components: cultural competency training, adolescent development, mentorship, and a productive work plan, creating a productive work plan. The next item is the threshold for the work. So we require that youth work at least 15 hours a week for at least six weeks if youth are not enrolled in school. This ensures that youth have a robust work experience and not just a few hours on a new job. If youth are enrolled in school, we reduce the number of hours a week to 10 hours a week to support academic success. Programs require weekly check-ins between the youth and their supervisor. Youth training programs are by design learning experiences. We expect that supervisors are regularly checking in with their youth employees. And the last item that's required is youth employees must have a work plan. Much like having a strong supervisor on the work site for a young person, the work plan is a vital guiding document that provides structure to support youth employees and supervisors, to set clear expectations, and guide the conversations and evaluation. A well-developed work plan sets the course for a successful youth work experience. The items I presented to you were collectively thought to be essential for youth development in the workforce, but additionally, we require programs to have at least one of the following components: a professional development opportunity, for example, training in Excel or Outlook or PowerPoint; a job shadowing opportunity; or the opportunity for youth to earn academic credit based for their work experience. We believe that by following these criteria, employers will be encouraged to partner with an existing youth employment program, or they will have very clear expectations for what creating an internal program will involve. We'll take questions.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you very much.
Just a moment, please. And I am on speaker management just to help us, so if folks have other questions. Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Peterson, one of the things that STEPUP did a few years ago was to build in a component of financial literacy, and I wondered if that could be included as part of the additional components that we could ask of other organizations as part of the other components section, even though they're not receiving local funding through STEPUP? Is that something we would be willing to share with other programs and could possibly build into the requirements?
Thank you, Councilmember Quincy. Yes, I think that we could add that to the, at least two of the following components, and have a financial literacy component to that.
Good. I would encourage that. Thank you very much.
All right. Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to ask, what level of engagement did you do with small businesses? And what about jobs for youth that are 14 years old, for instance, that are not going to be offering opportunities with Excel or academic credit-based opportunities where, you know, they're just doing some nice-to-have work around the business that the owner's just doing because they want to give youth that first taste? just doing because they want to give youth that first taste of a job and that first opportunity?
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. We're hoping that by setting up this criteria, that those small businesses would go through an organization like Step Up or Brooklink or some of the established programs for youth so that we can help provide that structure for them and that they could then pay the lesser wage, 85% of the wage for that. Yeah.
So what level of engagement have you done with the small business community? Because I have a lot of small business owners that are really concerned specifically about this part and that it just will no longer make sense for them to offer these opportunities. It sounds like you're trying to encourage them to go through a different program rather than just doing the hiring on their own. And how have you engaged them along the way?
So, thank you, Councilmember Johnson. I-- we have not-- I did not, as part of this, engage the small business community. I looked specifically at the criteria for what a training program that would be approved would be, because that's the sort of the focus that I was given. And I still think that those businesses could go through one of these training programs, and we can provide all of that structure and all this training, and it wouldn't change their model very significantly to hire those 14- and 15-year-olds like they do through Step Up. We have 14- and 15-year-olds, and still have a similar work experience and be able to fit into that 85% of the wage.
I guess my comment on that would be, I think that's, you know, not engaging the small business community on this would be very problematic. I think that this criteria makes sense in certain scenarios and capacities and can be really valuable, but I think that there have been major concerns and red flags being brought up by the small business community about their-- how this will actually disincentivize hiring those especially 14- to 17-year-olds. And I understand that the whole idea around this is that we don't want exploitation, especially of youth who are, for instance, 17, 18, 19, 20 years old, who are living independently, you know, sometimes our parents, and trying to just get by and survive. And so that makes a lot of sense to me, but at the same time, we don't want to close the door on these opportunities for youth across the city who aren't in that situation and who are just trying to get that experience. And for business owners to have all this extra work involved with doing this, and frankly, not much of an incentive. I don't think 85% for 90 days is going to really make it work for a lot of business owners. So I think we need to get out there and engage the small business community around this issue. I think there needs to be more work around that.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. I understand those concerns, and I think that within the ordinance, we're trying to give youth a work experience that has a lot of components, not just a 14-year-old working at their neighborhood hardware store, which is a great experience as well. But the criteria for approved youth and training programs, as written here in his-- was what I was tasked with, was to create that broad framework of what it looks like to build youth workforce. And it-- and I would throw it back to the council for like whether 85% for 90 days is worth it, right? For that-- for that local shop or the small businesses that you talk to, if it's enough for them to, you know, join Step Up or join any of their many youth employment programs, if that's enough of an incentive, the 85% for 90 days. What their benefit, I think, is for those small employees is that-- or small employers is that they get a young person who's better trained and more engaged and understands how that job fits into their broader career.
And yet, we didn't engage them on this. And so I understand where your focus has been on this because of the direction, and so I just think that that, to me, says that the council has more work to do on this issue because it's, to me, a very large unintended consequence if we end up denying youth across our city this opportunity to work at their local hardware store, for instance.
All right, we have some council members lined up to speak. First is Council President Johnson, and then Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I guess I'm kind of thinking along Councilmember Johnson's lines, too. Do we have, in our research, and perhaps it's in there, any kind of account of the young people that are employed in our city that are, let's say, under 17? I think-- I think we're, you know, and I get where we don't want to underpay young people who are at the end of their teenage life, but I do think that there is a distinction, then, it seems to be, to be made between employers that do take young people as young as 14 and have them work. The other question I would have, then, is also about-- I have heard, and I don't know that this is true, but there are certain restrictions around what you-- young people at certain ages can't do certain more dangerous jobs, that kind of thing. So I'd be interested in hearing about that information. And the other thing that I want to say is this 90-day thing does not work for a youth program that employs young people longer than 90 days. And what it does for many of these, and I'm sure you talked to the cookie cart, I hope, in this--
Sure.
Okay. Some of their young people, and they take-- their young people are at the younger age of the spectrum. They don't like their kids to be, you know, continuing to work for them when they're a senior in high school, that kind of thing. They like to get kids in really early. And so that is problematic for them, and because after that 90 days, then it goes up to this minimum wage, and that's a real challenge. And what it means clearly is that they will serve fewer children. So we can make a choice about whether or not, you know, we want to turn 100 kids away from a program that is just an outstanding program to accomplish this goal of getting everybody covered under 20 years of age. So I just think that there-- we should be looking at maybe this younger age spectrum, 14 and up, 14 to 17, something like that, to see if we can carve something out that makes sense for that. And then also, how do you accommodate these programs, the training programs that last longer than 90 days for that age group?
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson.
Go ahead, finish.
You're right. The child labor laws for 14- and 15-year-olds, it changes when they turn 16. Many of us, when we turn 16, figured out like we can get our own job, right? That's because the liability changes. So for those 14- and 15-year-olds in the Step Up program, the city hires them. We take on a higher liability. We buy special insurance, and we take on the liability in order to allow those 14- and 15-year-olds to work and have their first work experience. And at the 14- and 15-year-old level of Step Up, we see a higher rate of retention because those youth can't get a job any other way. And that-- this minimum wage ordinance will affect that budget for us, right? Because we'll be paying them a little bit more, even at the 85% level. So I hear what you're saying in that way. And then also, I would just throw that-- the 90-day piece back to council for exactly the reasons that you said for programs that work year-round. That is going to affect their programming and probably have them serve fewer youth.
So we have some other council members in line for comments. Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, I think these are important questions. I wanted to take a step back to all of the engagement that we did during the minimum wage outreach and discussion in the years of study and engagement that happened. And the counterpoint to some of the issues that have been raised is how much we heard from youth about not making assumptions about why they're working. So we have a lot of youth in our city who are working to support their families, who are parents themselves, who are facing-- we have a lot of youth in our shelter system who are working to try to get themselves out into stable housing, again, many with young children. And so when we were discussing this originally, the kind of question about, do we have just a separate youth wage? I think the counterpoint to that in the decision we made as policymakers was that we were interested in creating a youth training program, but not a separate youth wage because we didn't want to leave behind all of these young people who are working for all the same reasons that adults are. And so the point would be, you know, we didn't want someone at McDonald's to make a different wage because they are a certain age, or someone at a local store either. So there was a policy argument for focusing on a youth training program, not a youth wage. So we didn't ask staff to create a youth wage. We asked staff to bring us back a proposal for how to define a youth training program. So if the policy position of the council has changed, I think there would be a lot of people in here on all sides of that question, like reminding us and kind of revisiting that policy discussion that we had already had. So again, just kind of reinforcing that. The policy question we were asking was not having a youth wage or not, it was having a youth training program and how to define it.
Thank you, Councilmember Bender.
Okay, Councilmember Bender, and then I have a comment, and Councilmember Gordon has a comment, and then maybe we can wrap this up. All right? So I just wanted to kind of weigh in on this. Thank you, Councilmember Bender. I'll just kind of remind my colleagues, this was actually one of the most debated items as we discussed a minimum wage. We had intense engagement around this, and essentially, we, in the end, kind of picked a bit of a compromised position because there were a lot of individuals and groups, including some, I think, debate among our own staff about whether even having a training program at an 85% wage was the right thing to do. Lots of debate as well about the length of this time. And so I fully agree that revisiting this question will invite a tremendous amount of engagement from stakeholders. And just to remind colleagues of that, and that, you know, we did already kind of take this vote on this piece and with a lot of debate among ourselves as council members. So thanks for the overview. I really appreciate hearing more about what constitutes a qualified training program and why that's important. And I think that was actually really helpful to me in kind of understanding this area. I'll just, you know, maybe note sort of an economic issue, too, which is that, you know, we-- we're in a hunt for workers. I mean, essentially, that is really-- so we're not really in a situation where employers, whether they're large or small, have an-- at least today, have an overabundance of applicants. And so that ends up being sort of a key as to whether or not they would choose between qualified workers, a youth worker. We have kind of an opposite situation where employers are looking for new ways to bring in new employees and attract them, whether they're youth or adults, into, I hope you're interested in my line of work and that you continue to grow in this work. And so I just want us to kind of remember that is an environment that we are in. We are not in an environment today that is an overabundance of applicants for many jobs that frankly, youth would be qualified or competitive for. And that is anticipated to continue well into the future. So with that, I'll-- Councilmember Gordon has asked to make a comment or raise a question, and then we have no one else in line, so I think I'll receive and file after that. Councilmember Gordon.
Yeah, I think I had a question and a comment. Did we hear from any employer that said with these requirements, they would no longer be willing to hire a 14, 15, or 16, or 17-year-old?
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. Excuse me. Most of our employers in the private sector that we've been talking with said that they would be fine with hiring the intern at the current minimum wage, not at the 85% wage.
Okay, which would then be one easy avenue for them to not have to provide any of the additional support that's stipulated in there, correct?
Right, and to speak to what Councilmember Bender was saying, if we have a training wage, a training program wage, and we have the other jobs, our youth have a disincentive to come to the training programs and get all of the other robust career development that we provide, because they can just go get their own job at any place, which is a great experience. But what Step Up and other programs like Step Up provide is a lot more than just the work experience, to give context and to start to ladder them into experiences that are more challenging for them and to think about their careers, not just their jobs.
But we're not requiring an employer to go through Step Up in order to qualify as a youth training program?
If they want to-- excuse me, Councilmember Gordon. If they want to create their own program based on our criteria, they could do that.
Correct. So, and I think that's good to have that flexibility as well. Also, when I look at a six-hour of new employee training orientation, that doesn't seem like that much to expect. And talking about teamwork, communication, time management, that's normal stuff, I think, that happens in a lot of these places. So the small business person I would talk to about this earlier in my discussions, they'd be raving about the support and orientation they provided these youth because they wanted to get a long-term worker there who'd come back next summer and work. And so they were talking about how much extra time and effort they put in. I think some of them would claim they definitely put in more than six hours. I also think a two-hour supervisor training, that's two hours for your career. So you take your supervisor training, and then you're set from that day forward to be supervising these youth in your program. It doesn't seem that onerous to expect somebody to do that either. And things like a weekly check-in with your supervisor? Well, I suspect every one of these employers checks in daily with the 15- and 14- and 16-year-olds who are there, and how did it go today? What happened? And what, did you have any problems? Those kinds of things. So I don't see this as being that onerous, and I think it's reasonable expectations to have, and it would help that youth. And I'm concerned about, if we didn't have anything, so many people would be trying to pay less just to save a little bit of money, even all the way up to the 20-year-olds. So those are my comments. Thank you.
I am not seeing other council members in clue-- in queue, excuse me. And I'm trying to look back at my materials. Were you recommending that we take any action besides a receive and file? I just want to make sure I'm kind of clear, because it seems like you've established some criteria, but I think that's kind of more administrative rule-type criteria. Am I correct?
That's correct.
All right, thank you. So then I will move that we receive and file this item. On approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And thank you very much. As you can see, you kind of stepped into the middle of what's, you know, a policy issue where people have all sorts of opinions based on their engagement with a lot of important stakeholders. So thank you very much. With that, we have some council committee reports. Committee Development and Regulatory Services is first with Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. We'll be bringing nine items forward for approval tomorrow. Items one-- or Friday. Items one and two are land sales. Three and four are new business licenses. Five is the much-anticipated Airbnb VRBO Regulation of Short-Term Rentals License. There will be one change to the platforms portion, which is item number six. I do want to mention that in committee, we heard a lot about the difference between the large corporate platforms and the smaller platforms that are run by rental companies or condo associations or smaller platforms, and the burden of a large fee creating them to be equal with the large platforms. So there was some work done with the smaller platforms and our staff, and I anticipate an amendment to that tomorrow. Item seven is a lengthy item in three parts that has to do with our Brownfield Grant Round. This is both for Deed, Met Council, and Hennepin County. And number eight is our regular liquor business and gambling licenses, and nine are amendments to the notes for various outstanding homebuyer assistance loans. I'm happy to answer any questions on items one through nine.
Questions for Councilmember Goodman. Pretty important items that are moving forward. Not seeing any. Next, I apologize. Health, Environment, and Community Engagement with Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing two items forward for approval. The first is authorizing execution of a mutual aid agreement between Minneapolis and 16 other Twin Cities jurisdictions to help us respond to public health and environmental health emergencies. And the second item is authorizing execution of two more community solar subscription agreements, one with Rena Solar and another with Renewable Energy Partners. And the significant piece about these is these will be solar gardens with availability for subscriptions for low-income households, and the city's going to be serving as kind of a backstop for those subscriptions. So now more people can get access to community solar in the city. And I'm happy to stand for questions on either of those.
All right, thank you. I'm not seeing questions. Next, we have Intergovernmental Relations. For this, we moved forward a new document, which is a collection of-- For this, we moved forward a new document, which is a collection of Metropolitan Council policy positions. We have a couple of small changes, and I think the best way to handle that is I will, that they were, that were kind of the result of discussion in committee. And so I will forward that via email so everyone can, can see these. These were not controversial changes within the committee. It just, yeah, this is a new document, and we discussed how to make sure we're best reflecting the city's positions. Next, we have Transportation and Public Works with the Vice Chair, Councilmember Pomisano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are 15 items for your approval on Friday. To summarize them, the first is to levy and adopt SAC charges for a small list of properties. The next two contracts are to auction some decommissioned equipment. Item number four is the beginning of the Hennepin Avenue reconstruction process. The next five are all contracts for street work in our water plant, various kinds of services. Item number 10 is the Broadway Street Northeast Project Designation. Item 11 is the layout approval for 28th Avenue South. Item number 12 are MIND grant application submittals. Item number three is exciting. It is establishing the 2018 street resurfacing rates, and the exciting part of that is there is no change from 2017 rates. Item number 14 is a bid for various water utility materials, and item 15 is importantly, our water supply plan update that we heard in committee that day. So that's being submitted for approval and then submittal later this year. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. I'm not seeing questions on that. Ways and Means is next with Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ways and Means bring forward five items for consideration on Friday. The first is a contract amendment at, a contract closeout with Premier Electrical for work at the Convention Center. We also have a contract amendment with Loffler Construction for Fire Station Number 15. Item number three is the 2017 Property Special Tax Assessment for delinquent utility charges. Four is a contract amendment with Metropolitan Council for additional scope of services. And the final item is a grant approving acceptance of allocated funds from Homeland Security for rail and pipeline exercise training. Happy to answer any question on those items.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have Zoning and Planning with Councilmember Bender. Or, I'm sorry. Councilmember Johnson is going to give the report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was chairing the committee that day, so we have six items that we are bringing forward, two of them without recommendation to the council, but I believe we'll have motions to approve both. Those are items number two for an interim use permit, and item number five for rezoning. I'll stand for any questions.
All right. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. I'll just note that the two items that came forward without recommendation are both in the second ward. I'm supporting approval of both of them. In fact, in terms of the somewhat controversial cell tower truck, maybe everybody got a letter from Verizon about it, I would have gone further than the four-month staff is recommending. Might be interested in seeing if we could give them six months. It's a complicated deal with the University of Minnesota about where they actually will allow cell structures based on an old contract with AT&amp;T, so I can give people more details later, but I definitely support that. And certainly, the other one is a rezoning issue, which I've been working on for a long time to put in, something that the community's been looking forward to, some senior housing in the area there, but it did require a little bit of zoning out of light industrial into commercials to accommodate the density.
All right. Thank you. Any other business folks would like to discuss? Not seeing any. So with that, we have concluded with our agenda for today, and we adjourned.